So we'll call the meeting to order. And first thing is agenda. Anything anyone would like to have changed from the proposed agenda? Not a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that the agenda be per discussed, presented.
Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. I just have it. We have our agenda, and I don't believe we have anything on the consent agenda. So we don't have to worry about that. We'll start out with a public hearing. This is the second public hearing to consider submission of a community development block grant application, neighborhood revitalization for fiscal year 2425 funding cycle. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of City Council, I have a couple of slides to go through here. And you'll recall at your September 5th meeting, we had the initial public hearing for consideration of this grant application. And so this is the required second public hearing. We've since got a draft application together. There's just a little bit of information here. So tonight, this is to consider the submission of a community development block grant, neighborhood revitalization application. This is offered through the North Carolina Rural Economic Development Division. And so the application is for rehabilitation of four homes. They're all owned by low to moderate income households in the city. The total request we have is $562,710.50, and we're not proposing a local match requirement for this one. This would be submitted in partnership with Housing Assistance as the one that we submitted in the 2020 funding cycle was, and it would be administered by Land of Sky Regional Council. So a little bit more about the proposed application. As I said, it's for home rehabilitation. That's the only activity we're proposing. It's to repair housing conditions that pose a threat to health and safety. They're secured in the form of deferred forgivable loans. So we technically give a loan to the homeowner. They don't owe any payments on, and as long as they stay in the home, then it's forgiven over a period of years. So how did we select the beneficiaries? Since this was a really tight timeline that only got even tighter because of the storm, we used our partnership with Housing Assistance. They routinely, as part of their normal work, pre-qualified people for all kinds of housing funding opportunities, including CDBG. So we relied really heavily on their information, and they pre-qualified about 15 people who met all the requirements. They live in the city, income, the condition of the home, and they had to own their home and that sort of thing. Then we reviewed their list for ownership and took a look at liens and things like that to make sure that we could actually, that the state would allow us to move forward with them as a beneficiary. And then we had the Housing Selection Committee, which was initially formed as part of the 2020 grant application cycle, take a look at the list of beneficiaries. Those beneficiaries were ranked based on factors like income, different status, like if they were a senior citizen, and there's points for that, if you're disabled, if there's children in the home, if there's hazardous materials like lead or lead-based paint, excuse me, or asbestos. All of those things factor into basically how critically in need that potential beneficiary was of the rehabilitation. And so we landed on four who met all of the qualifications. So then Housing Assistance conducted cursory inspections of all of those homes, and they developed estimates for the awarded. We do even more detailed inspections, and there'd be a work write-up. And then that work write-up is used as bid specs. We bid it out to private contractors to complete the work. And then, as I said, the award is secured by a deferred forgivable loan. So just a very high-level breakdown of what we're proposing here. So $511,555 is actually for the rehab activities at those, and there's the four addresses there. I've got a map on a future slide. And then $50,000 of it is grant administration costs. That includes Housing Assistance, all the work they're doing, doing the work write-ups, supervising the contractor, a lot of administration work. And then Land of Sky, who helped us get the application together, but is also going to help us administering the application and submitting all the documentation for reimbursement, which is a big lift in itself. And so there's the map I promised you. So it's a scattered site, as I said. There's four there, and the colors there, the overlay is the percentage of low to moderate income households in the city. But the beneficiaries themselves, as I said, are low to moderate income households. So they themselves are low to moderate income. You have to be to get a direct benefit like this from the grant. You've seen these slides and previous presentations, but just as an example of the kind of work we're proposing here, this is from the 2020 award cycle. So 620 Jonas Street, there's the before pictures in pretty serious need of repair. And there's a slide of it after, the completely rebuilt front porch, new siding, abated all the lead-based paint on the trim, and took off all the asbestos siding, replaced it with new vinyl siding. Then you see the back there. There's also all kinds of interior work and unseen structural repairs. The floor was leveled, and new joists were put in, and a lot of work on the foundation in this home. So there's a lot of health and safety things, but also aesthetically, it helps too. So there's just a list of the high-level summary of the improvements that were made to Jonas Street. You see the total cost there for that work. So tonight, this is the second public hearing. The first one, we hadn't selected beneficiaries. We didn't have a draft application. Now we do. And so the public is invited to comment on the proposed application. And if there's a resolution before you, and if the City Council chooses to move forward after this public hearing, we would finalize the grant application, which is stick that signed resolution in here and mail it to RIT first thing in the morning. So I'm glad to take any questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor, it has.
We will open this public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding this lock grant application? Anyone who would like to speak? If you could give your name and address for the clerk's record, please.
I'm Meg LeBeck. I'm the Executive Director of Housing Assistance Corporation. I live in Transylvania County. I just wanted to thank the City Council for your interest in home repair. This is a huge piece of our mission in the community, and it has been our great pleasure to work with you in the last CDGB home repair project, and very excited for the opportunity to continue that work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment on this proposal? If not, we will close that public hearing. Counsel, discussion or a motion?
I have one question.
Yeah.
I think last time, there was an overage of the budget that we had originally had. Do we know if that's going to be a thing again this time, or do we have?
I can address that the best I can. So you know, the application for the 2020 funding cycle was developed before COVID, and so responsible for a lot of the increase in costs. So I can't guarantee that the costs won't increase from now until when we actually, you know, it would be probably months from now if we get awarded and then actually able to do the work. But we've talked to Housing Assistance about how they did the estimates, and they're a lot more conservative this time, and with bigger contingencies to try to address that. So these are much more in line with what we actually expect the costs to be versus, you know, last time around, they were pretty conservative. So this time, we're expecting it to cost a lot of money.
And there were some fees and other development costs that we had not taken into account with the 2020 application, but we have.
Yeah. Yeah, like a builder's risk insurance policy on the homes that's there being. So the 2020 application was put together by a bunch of scrappy, hard-working city staff. And they tried their absolute best, but we've got some more experience around now. And so it's, yeah.
Thank you.
I was.
You are very scrappy.
We tried.
Any other questions or discussion or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I move that the City Council adopt the resolution by the City Hendersonville City Council. Sorry.
Was there anybody? That's what I asked you. Is there anybody online?
Oh, okay.
I would mention.
Oh, I thought that's when you did that, I thought you were saying.
We're checking.
Just shut up.
And I rehearsed this too.
You rehearsed it?
Start again.
I'd like to make a motion, please. I move that the City Council adopt the resolution by the City Hendersonville City Council, authorizing the submission of an application for community development block grant funding for the City Hendersonville Housing Revitalization Assistant Program.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries, and can move ahead with that application, which I've already signed, so. There you go. Made an assumption that would be okay. New business, amendments to fee schedule.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. You have before you a proposed amended fee schedule that, in a nutshell, proposes to reduce many of the zoning fees to zero while the mayoral declared state of emergency is in effect. I hand it out, one that's a little bit bigger than the one that was in the agenda, and so hopefully it's a little bit easier to read, but I've highlighted in yellow on it. And as you can see on the first page, it says, under community development, for so long as the mayor's declared state of emergency is in effect, the community development fees marked with a number sign are reduced to zero. So that would be coming in to get a zoning verification letter, a non-conforming use alteration request that takes forward a adjustment review. These are things that we thought Lou and I spoke, and Lou, you're welcome to come up here too, about to see, that could come up that would be hurricane-related. As you're aware, the legislature passed a similar thing, but it was a lot more limited. It was, had to be specifically a direct result from Helene, and it was really only related to buildings, to the construction, alteration, renovation, or moving of a building from one place to another. So this is a little bit more broad to try and help ease some of the pain that's associated with it. And then Lou, as Community Development Director, felt that it would be a lot easier to administer. These aren't high-dollar fees that we charge, and so it would be a lot easier to administer this if all fees were waived, not just the Helene fees, because then they'd have to document and argue with people over whether something was really related to Helene or not. And they're really involved in a lot of damage assessment work and other work related to the storm. And so he felt that it would be best to recommend that just all the fees be waived that are highlighted in yellow. If you look on the third page, you can see the fire inspection fees. Fire inspections were done for all the hurricane-damaged buildings, and those folks were not charged an inspection fee for that, so this just covers that. This will be retroactive to September 26. And then the Finance Director, I spoke with him, and he is recommending that delinquent account fees and late fees be waived for water and sewer and, well, primarily water and sewer for delinquent accounts that become delinquent during the period of emergency. If they already had delinquencies, they would continue to be charged those fees for those delinquencies. And then once the emergency is over, the fees would kick back in from that date forward, but would not apply retroactively. And then, I might have missed a highlight, but stormwater fees.
I do.
Yeah, sure.
I guess I could, like, scan it all, but are there also for reconnect fees for people who are, like, if a house was deemed uninhabitable, and so then is the water cut off then? And I don't know if it is or not, but like, if it is, then does it eventually would have to be reconnected if the home was to be repaired? And then would that be part of this as well?
You're asking me something I don't know, and I don't believe our Utilities Director is here today, but do you know?
I do not know off the top of my head, but I mean, I would imagine we would have already, at the very least, we would have disconnected those meters. Honestly, I don't know if we pulled them or not.
Would they only be charged if they had to be, or is there a reconnect fee to?
There is a reconnect fee, but I mean, that might happen months from now.
Right. Let me see. If you look on the, let's see, one, two, three, four, fifth page, it has the water and sewer fees.
Why don't we?
We could bring those back.
Why don't we bring it back at next week's meeting, ask, see what all is involved in that.
Okay. Because this isn't very specific.
Yeah, I did not speak with our Utilities Director about that. There is another item on your agenda about the leak adjustment policy. I did not speak with him about that, but we'll be happy to do that.
I bet. Things are going to pop up, just out of circumstances that.
Well, things that you don't even think about. Because I'm thinking about people that.
Yeah, that we can address when that happens.
Like, if the service is not there, and then it has to go back, then are they going to have to go through an additional credit check and like that whole process to reestablish the service, which I'm assuming they would have to deal with Duke or any of the providers or those things? And, you know, just not to burden people that have already been burdened.
Sure. Those are all very good points. I do know that they were going ahead and adjusting bills for periods of time that the service was down.
Right.
Because they didn't get service, so there wasn't really an action of City Council that's necessary to do that. So I knew they were doing that. But yeah, I can definitely check on those things. I think I forgot to highlight, but there's also one for stormwater, that all the stormwater inspections and things, and if they have to get a permit to rebuild on stormwater, those are zero too. Can't see it at the moment, but I'm pretty sure I reduced those to zero too. But we'll bring it back after we, at Monday's meeting. It's retroactive to the date that the state of emergency was declared, and so it won't hurt anyone if we wait till Monday, until next week's meeting, if that's the pleasure of City Council. Is that good?
Okay. Any questions? Any questions? Discussion or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council adopt an ordinance of the City of Hendersonville City Council to amend the budget. Budget ordinance of by adopting an amended fee schedule due to impacts of Hurricane Helene as presented.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor of the amended budget ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. I just have it. All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is consideration regarding the regular meeting agenda. Does Clerk want to come in there?
I'll be glad to jump in here. Because of the impact of Hurricane Helene, Helene, excuse me, on city ops, we've had to move our meetings to this room, and so we need to adjust our public notice, our regular meeting agenda, our regular meeting calendars to reflect that we'll be meeting in this room for the months of October, November, and December. And then we'll evaluate whether we'll be back in our city operations, our normal council chambers after that. Also, as part of this, would ask Council to adopt a change in calendar that we will not have a second meeting in November. That would be November 27, which is the day before the Thanksgiving holiday. So you'll see there that we're asking to change venues to reflect for public notification. Our regular meetings will be held in the second-floor meeting room inside City Hall for the months of November and December. Of course, we're doing it. And then also that we will be canceling the November 25 meeting.
Yeah, the December 25.
Yes.
Or did we already do that?
All right, go ahead.
Any questions? Discussion or motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council approve the City Council's regular meeting agenda as amended.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor of mending the regular meeting schedule, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. I just have it, and we will do that. Next, ratification of contracts entered for Helene.
Thank you. So there are two, as you'll recall, at your last meeting, you authorized the city manager to go ahead and enter into contracts, and then if they needed to be ratified, to bring those back. And so we have two such agreements related to debris removal that are on the agenda. And this is just statewide kind of how it works, but NCDOT, as you know, controls many of the streets in the city. And so if the city wants to be able to go ahead and arrange for, even with the county, DOT streets to have the debris picked up, we have to enter into an agreement where they give us as city the authority to do that, and it makes us responsible for it. And then it's a five-year term, but it's terminable with 30 days' notice. And then the way we perform that function is the next agreement, and that is the inter-local agreement with the county, because the county has activated that agreement that was put in place before the storms for debris removal, and so they've assumed the responsibility to do debris removal countywide. So then we enter into an inter-local agreement with the county, and they will do that on our behalf. And so both of those agreements have been signed, but they are on your agenda for ratification.
Anyone want to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council approve and ratify the contracts and agreements presented by the city manager or city attorney.
Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of ratifying, approving and ratifying the contracts and agreements, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. I just have it, motion carries, and they have been ratified. All right. Consideration of amendments to city policies as necessary to support Hurricane Helene recovery, item title as it appears on the agenda. What it means. Not sure.
Something with city policies, please. Do you want me to? So again, at your last meeting, when we were in the throes of Hurricane Helene, City Council authorized that certain administrative policy adjustments be made. One of those was to allow the department heads and the city manager to be paid for overtime, even though they are exempt. There is another provision in the personnel policy that allows the city manager to make some administrative amendments. I know it sounds really complicated, but he did so and cut off overtime for exempt employees and everybody after the first two weeks. And so we are just asking that City Council ratify that as a formal change to that inclement weather policy, and it's limited to Helene, that for Helene, that city department heads and city manager and other exempt employees would no longer accrue overtime. And so we just ask you to ratify that. The second one is the leak adjustment policy, and you also authorized the city manager to put in place a leak adjustment policy to make Helene-related leaks easier to be adjusted. Normally, there's a limit on how many times you can ask for an adjustment, and it's limited to $1,000, and this removes those limitations with respect to Hurricane Helene. And so we would ask City Council to ratify both of those administrative policies.
Anyone want to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that the City Council approve and ratify the amendments to city policies as presented by the city manager and the board.
All right. Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of approving and ratifying the amendments to city policies, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. I just have it, motion carries, and they have been ratified. All right. Hurricane Helene report updates. Mr. Cotton?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the Council. This will take a few minutes to talk a little bit about the actions that our staff continue to take as it relates to recovery of Hurricane Helene. And as we go forward, we'll get into more detailed reporting on specific items, but I just want to give you kind of an overview of where we are today. We continue to be in a state of emergency, although there's no restrictions or anything. We're in a state of emergency as we continue to work with FEMA. FEMA is in town. We've met with them on a couple occasions, they've met with the mayor, and we're, at this point, we are continuing to gather our documentation, continuing to move forward with all the paperwork that goes along with this, awaiting our project manager. We'll ultimately get a project manager who will help us submit FEMA documentation to the federal government for reimbursement. We're also working with our insurance carrier for our damaged buildings, and I'll go through that just a little bit in just a minute about exactly what buildings are damaged and how we're reviewing it. But there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work, a lot of work that we are trying to do. Our mission is two parallel paths. One is recovery and dealing with the storm, but also we are slowly returning to normal activities, priorities of the City Council that were occurring prior to the storm. So we are working in parallel paths, and so we're trying to organize that in a way that we can recover as well as continue moving forward. We continue to meet regularly as a team. Previous to this week, we were meeting on Mondays and Fridays as a total, what we call a continuity of operations team. Going forward, just going to do that one day a week on Monday, but we really just continued our briefings that we were having in the emergency operations center during the storm. We were doing those twice a day. In addition to that, we've set up four, what we call functional team meetings focused on things such as community development and public safety as one functional team. We meet once a week to discuss items. And let me get through those items, and then I'll talk to you about the other groups. So as we're talking about, just a quick update as it relates to community development and public safety. Police Department and Fire have basically returned to normal operations. However, we are seeing increasing issues related to motor vehicle accidents and things around traffic management and traffic control. I think we can honestly say we've seen about a 25% increase in response or a number of calls for service on both the police and fireside, basically because of number of folks in our community. So we've seen about a 25% increase there. No burn ban yet from state government or county government. Of course, you cannot burn in the city anyway, but no specific burn ban in the city as of this, or in the county at this point. We have a number of folks that are living in hotels. As of, I think, this week, we had 212 vouchers for hotels. Two-thirds of those vouchers are actually folks that are living outside the county. But we do have a number of folks that are staying in our local hotels who may or may not be using FEMA.
Do you have any idea of city folks in that?
We do not. It has not been broken down. Those numbers have not been broken down for us, because a number of folks, I think Melinda and I were. Because a number of folks, I think Melinda and I were in Green Meadows on Saturday and was one of the two neighbors that was so severely damaged and we heard a number of folks had left the community, but exact numbers, I don't know that we have, so.
Do we know what percentage of the vouchers are actually able to be used? Because I know that there's issues with hotels not accepting the vouchers.
I know we have been working our, the TDA, the local TDA, and I'm looking at, the local TDA has been working to get more hotels in Hendersonville to accept the vouchers, but I don't have.
There's currently six hotels that are accepting the vouchers. TDA is working with the others. Of the two-thirds, there are people staying in Greenville, South Carolina, Tennessee. So they're trying to get more local hotels to accept them, but it's a work in progress.
So police and fire are also trying to monitor any price gouging issues. I know Councilmember Lawrence has, has gotten a couple of complaints and we've passed those on to the county and ultimately it'll go to the Attorney General's office. The Attorney General will be responsible for investigating price gouging there, so I'm working on those things. Community development, we are evaluating all of the remaining special events for the remainder of the year, trying to evaluate cost benefit as it relates to, we're going to get things back to normal, but also being mindful of our staff time and having staff capacity to, to deal with the special events. We've moved some things around and are requesting assistance. But Halloween is going on as planned. Trick or Treat Street is, or Treat Street is going on Thursday as well as we'll, we will be providing, blocking off Fourth Avenue for the, the private trick-or-treating that's going on on Fourth Avenue, so that'll occur Thursday. Future events, we, we postponed or canceled several of our farmer's market dates, but there's pop-up markets going on by some of the local vendors that will continue. We also will have our regular holiday market the first Saturday in December. Turkey Trot is, is being planned. Other holiday events, tree lighting, Christopher Freiter going is planned. As part of the recovery process, we purchased, we lost a number of our barricades. We've just purchased 64 new barricades. You can see those, 32 of the 64 are located on Bearcat. You've seen those new barricades. These are going to be less labor-intensive, less water-intensive barricades, so we're trying those out and we've got.
Those yellow?
Yeah, yes ma'am. So the originals came in, 30, 32 originally came in as loners. We'll get 32 more, 32 arrived this week that have lighting, reflective or lighting, lights on them so you can see them at night. They will ultimately come with a trailer that'll be, we hope will be easier to move than some of our old water barricades. We'll use a combination until we have a sufficient number, but you'll see those barricades going out.
Extra expenses, are they reimbursable by someone?
We will, we are requesting those barricades, for example, extra expenses are reimbursed by FEMA. We will have to justify, justify the expenditure. The barricades, honestly, we had planned to buy these new type of barricades anyway, but we made the decision to go ahead and buy them now to, because they will be used as part of recovery, so they will be, we hope they will be reimbursed, but ultimately it's be determined.
And what is the determining factor on the match from FEMA? Because it's 50-50 and then it goes to 90-10, is that right?
Actually, actually for public assistance, it's 75-25. And typically, understanding, well, category A and B now are 100% reimbursable. See, the rest of them is 75-25, but part of the appropriation from the state level is the state will cover that 25%. We've completed damage assessment. Mike Huffman has been out doing damage assessment in the FEMA, in the 100-year flood plane, so he's completed that, identified buildings that have had substantial damage, commercial buildings. Those buildings will have to be, if they're built back, will have to be brought into compliance, typically raised up or flood-proofed. We've also done our residential assessments. Those numbers are turned into the county, so if you look at the county numbers for damage, our numbers are included there. We, our folks did the assessment inside the city. Still, also, we did complimentary fire code or inspections, went out and vote for folk, met with folks who would be rebuilding, reminding them they need, need to get permits, need to come in and make sure they're in compliance as they, as they rebuild so that we don't have fires and other emergencies down the road. There will be, there'll continue to be some challenges as we go forward. I'll give you an example, there's, as it relates to, and debris removal is a, is a major topic that we'll be dealing with. We've got some whole mobile homes that we will have to figure out how to, how to dispose of in the community. Not, and then we have, you know, lots of vegetative debris, and I'll talk a little bit more about that, and C and D debris, but we're working through that. Working through temporary housing, we've met, Lou has met with the county regarding temporary housing. FEMA is currently looking for existing residential units to use. If they cannot find enough existing residential units, which we're pretty sure that won't happen, they'll look for opportunities to provide housing either on private property, whether that be manufactured housing or recreational vehicles on private property, in existing RV parks or mobile home parks, or they may ultimately build new parks. Still to be determined, may require some zoning ordinance amendments down the road, but working toward that. Economic recovery, trying to get, this is part of the parallel path, trying to get things back to normal. We'll have a November planning board item. Normal November planning board, you'll have some items that'll come to your December meeting. We will not have a December planning board meeting, try to, trying to put some spacing in there as we, as we move into the new year. But building permits have resumed, new construction has resumed from, from that. The downtown, downtown group is involved in establishing an economic recovery fund. I'll talk about that in just a minute. Also, working on the small business center or incubator that we have on Fifth Avenue. And we're also putting together a, we are open for business video with the Partnership for Economic Development, the TDA, the Chamber of Commerce, Small Business Center, et cetera. So trying to do things to, to let people know that we're open for business and are going to fully recover. You'll see an, an industrial project on your agenda at your November meeting next week, so that's positive. But the TDA is expecting or anticipating a 20% to 30% loss for hotel revenue. That is based on past storms. I don't know if that's going to be reality, but that's what they're kind of expecting.
Can I ask you something? Every hotel had somebody trying to book a room. Every hotel's full.
I asked the same question, so just simply what was said at the TDA meeting, so I'm not sure that's going to pan out, but that's the conversation.
Does FEMA pay?
They may not pay.
Just pay part.
But there's only six that are, is that right? Said six that are taking that. And I mean, I just had some people wanting to come in and I asked the goodness, couldn't find a room. And the ones that they did have were pretty high-end, I think. I was just curious.
Your community development and public safety department, that's what we've been focusing on going forward. We also have a, a Public Works Functional Group. As you can imagine, the number one thing's been debris. We are collecting the vegetative debris, is a mutual, our own forces in mutual aid. The county has exercised a state contract, those contractors are in. They are slowly getting at the full speed as it relates to vegetative debris. Currently, my understanding is they have 30 trucks in the entire county. So we'll continue to use mutual aid in the city to try to speed that up for city folks to get that debris. But you'll also see the state contractor in the city. Again, state contractor will go directly with FEMA being reimbursed. We will have to, for our forces and our mutual aid, we'll have to submit reimbursement through FEMA as it relates to that. We are focused on heavy, heavy debris areas first and then we'll, but going to do all over the city. Building debris is the one thing that has not been removed yet. The county has four debris sites and all this storm debris has to be taken to one of these four permitted sites. The vegetative debris, we actually have a fifth site at our own wastewater plants. That's where we're taking most of our debris. But the county, city vehicles cannot go to the four county debris sites. So they have one on 191, one at the community college, the landfill, and one up at the Ag Center. So the county contractor is going to those four locations. Building debris, I do not believe there's been permitted yet for the C and construction debris, that's why it's still on the side of the road. So really, there's no, no easy way of getting rid of that debris currently. So we just ask our residents to be patient with us. We want to get rid of it, but there's a number of areas in, in town and my anticipation is that'll be more problematic as we go forward. There'll be more and more folks who, who want that debris to disappear. And we want it to disappear too, but it'll take us a little bit of time to, to work through that. Also, in the Public Works, Public Works has started repairing parks, getting our parks back open. The Greenway is open. We have some damage, small planning damage, but the, the Greenway itself is open debris along, along the edge of the Greenway, but it is open. We'll remove that debris as time goes by and we'll ultimately have to do some stream stabilization in the long term. But the Greenway is open and functional. Patton Park remains closed. We are cleaning up, putting priority to opening the basketball courts, opening the skate park, opening the fields, opening the pavilions and opening the walking paths. So our crews are working to get those open in the very near term and maybe already opening some of those facilities. The playground and the pool will be much longer term. We'll have to get somebody in to assess the pool and assess those buildings around the pool. If you recall, we had talked about doing a renovation project there, so this may be a time, but we'll come back to you with more information. But the pool and playground may be a little bit longer term. Whitmire remains temporarily closed, that was flooded also. We've removed sheet rock and floor tiling from there and we're assessing damage there, so that's temporarily closed. Sullivan is priority to get back open. We will open everything up this week with the exception of the bathrooms. The bathrooms are typically winterized this time of year, so we're going to clean them really well and winterize them and then do any repairs through the winter. But the playground will be open. We have to get, we removed all of the mulch, we're going to put completely new mulch there and we removed a damaged piece of playground equipment, but the other equipment will be cleaned and sanitized to get that part open. MLK Park is open. King Park is temporarily closed. We'll work with the school system to determine baseball at King Park. Ro-Roo Park will be able to get open, working on that. Dog Park, we've got to do fence damage, we have some damaged fence, we'll repair those to get that open. Cemetery is open, regular maintenance occurring there. Lennox Park will get that open. And then there's also some fence damage at other places, but we're working to get a fence contractor and some bids to, to do all the fencing work, not only on the public work side, but also on the utility side. Bathrooms at Patton, we'll get those repaired in the short term and get them open. Same for Sullivan. Edwards is in good shape and downtown bathrooms are fine. So Public Works continues to work on that. We'll also do street and bridge assessment. We want to, we had to evaluate all our bridges for damage. We didn't have any obvious damage except for a couple of little places as it relates to streets, but we need to do a full assessment and we're working to get engineers to do that. Also, the same on stormwater drainage infrastructure. So we'll be putting together other parks. That's what your Public Works group is doing.
John, a question. You said the county has four down sites?
Yes.
And we have one?
Yes.
And we can't take our stuff to the county sites?
Our debris cannot.
Even the construction debris?
Well, so, so the construction debris, ultimately, we're going to ask, the debris sites, the debris sites are set up for the state contractor. So if the state contractor pulls up our debris, and let me, I'll correct one thing. Our state contractor, if they pick up debris, they can take our debris to those county sites. Also, if we haul, if our mutual aid and our staff hauls to our site, the state contractor can go to our site and then pick it up and remove it to the county site. City crews and our mutual aid crews cannot haul, cannot haul directly to the county sites, is my understanding, is what we've been told, is because of FEMA reimbursement and their contract with the state contractor, so.
Okay, but it's still ending up at the county sites.
They will, they will, well, we're grinding up, we're grinding some of ours and we're taking it to another.
We're not grinding anymore.
They're, they're picking up our debris and taking it.
We are. Real quick, John, so SCR, the county's contractor, has been coming to the wastewater treatment plant site on Mall Four and taking some of the debris as well. And we are, we actually are still grinding it, yeah.
So we're doing both. So we're having state contractor hire, haul part of it and we're grinding part of it.
That's a FEMA regulation or?
We, we're not exactly clear whether it's FEMA regulation or whether it's part of the state contract with, because the, the, the big issue with debris management is monitoring how much, because the contractor and us, we get reimbursed for how much you haul and it's based on the size of the trucks. The state and FEMA are very particular to make sure they don't pay for hauling debris twice. So I think it's a control mechanism that they have monitors on site to see how much comes in. And if too many different agencies are hauling into the same location, it's harder, it's harder to monitor who, who's getting paid for what debris.
But the city is not being handicapped by this, in your opinion?
I don't think, I mean, we're, we're, we're getting it picked up. It would, would it be easier if we could haul it directly to those sites? Yes, it would be easier, but we, we are making do and we figured out how to make it happen, if you want the honest answer.
I'll shut up again.
I can't see Brent back there, so.
John, the one exception is we have been hauling to the landfill as well.
Oh, the, the landfills, yeah.
So that is a permitted site, but you have been allowed to take it there, which anybody can, I think, still.
Yeah, any resident. So we're, we're working through debris management. We have a facility repair and replacement group, priority repairs are City Hall. We've got some repairs to stairwells here, a second floor bathroom, also work with, so we're, priority to get this building back in tip-top shape. Also, the operations center is a priority, as particularly as it relates to the assembly room and the lobby, so we can have public meetings there. So we're working to get proposals and bids to do those repairs so that we can get those and we're also awaiting insurance dollars and insurance money for that in addition to FEMA reimbursement. Patton Park, I mentioned, we're going to get an assessment of the pool and the bathrooms. The admin building, which was at Patton Park, is where Literary Connections was flooded. Our recommendation is that instead of rebuilding that, I believe is originally may have been a modular building, we, we recommend that we go ahead and just demolish that building and get it out of there. It's been flooded underneath a number of times and so our recommendation is to, to really remove that structure there. Whitmire, we're going to get some environment, architectural assessments, look at the long-term use of that building as it relates to a community center, which is part of your Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Lots of repairs going on with water sewer utility. That is, I won't steer right through that, but your utility department is going through constant. that, but your utility department is going through constant review of those that are making repairs throughout the utility system. Mills River intake is fully operational. They continue to make some additional repairs to return that to one hundred percent A1 condition. Their French River, French River intake, Brent, I think, has been looked at, and it looks like that is in pretty good shape, and we'll be moving forward with completing.
There's some minor electrical repairs that need to happen before we can do a start. We were scheduled to start up the facility, I think, on October second, so we've had to delay that. So it'll be coming here in a few weeks.
Similar repairs going on the wastewater treatment plant. We've got the Fletcher, Fletcher pump station's back up and running.
It is. The Fletcher, Fletcher tank is filled, so they're.
So that's positive. We continue to assess other drainage. Again, King Park, we've got some work to do, Sullivan Park. So working with insurance companies to get those repaired. We are yet to get any insurance reimbursement, but we are moving forward with that. We had a number of vehicles also that were flooded. We're over six hundred thousand dollars, I think, in vehicles. Our fleet manager has been able to find some slightly used vehicles that we'll be replacing those damaged vehicles with, again, waiting on insurance reimbursement as well as FEMA reimbursement for that. So that, some of those vehicles have been delivered, others are on order, and we'll be putting those back in the service. So we continue to meet, like I said, at least once a week, and then also are slowly moving back to normal activity. So that is what we're doing. That's our report. We'll have more up-to-date stuff as we go along. I do have one positive thing I would like to say here is that announcing today that they've created the Love Hendo Business Recovery Fund to support, support local businesses affected by Hurricane Helene. The fund is aimed at provides much-needed financial relief to the businesses impacted by the storm, addressing physical damage and economic loss that may lead to deterioration of the area. Direct and, it allows for transparent and transparent way for businesses to reach a critical short-term support as part of the broader economic recovery in Henderson County, so people can donate money. There's already a strong validation of money that's been established from public and private sectors to help these recovery efforts. First round of applications are due November the eighth, and, but also receive applications after that deadline. The Chamber of Commerce is directly involved. There's a nice quote in this press release from Reagan War, Chair of the Chamber of Commerce. And also, we're involved, the Small Business Center at Blue Ridge Community College, the Chamber of Commerce, as I mentioned, tourism development, the Henderson County Partnership for Economic Development, Small Business Center, and Friends of Downtown. So I think there's at least seed money of at least a hundred thousand to provide recovery funds to local businesses, so they can start preparing applications, and we'll accept them. All this will be released to the news media momentarily this afternoon. They had a meeting at four, as well as we'll accept donations.
Do you know if those are in the forms of grants or loans? The Love Hendo Fund.
I believe they are grants.
And I wanted to mention, if it's appropriate time to add to this, but Dogwood Community Health funded a very large grant program, and they're going to start having the application process tomorrow. It should be posted on Dogwood's website, and it's a twenty-five thousand dollar grant for businesses under a million, I think, in gross revenue. So those little things can help businesses right now until SBA decides to, well, not the SBA, the federal government decides to go back to work and refund the SBA.
Mr. Connet, a question has been asked of me, is, has there been any communication with the city and Housing Authority about public housing? You know, have you, have you heard anything from housing as to when they're going to start repairing those homes?
I have not. Have you had any, Jenny, have you had any, as part of the housing meetings, I don't know.
Not much detailed. I know that they're doing intake right now, so they're trying to figure out what needs to be repaired, and I know Meg's here, she wants to speak on it. Or I'm sorry, Susan.
Housing Authority.
I'm sorry, Housing Authority.
I don't know that we've had, I don't know that we've had any direct contact with the Housing Authority, but we can.
Okay, because, you know, several of them.
So I spoke with Connie Stewart, who's the executive director, perhaps. She did not give, I didn't ask that specific timeline question, but she did indicate that they were working with HUD and CDVG for exploring funding for repair work. She was very early on. I had, I had reached out to make sure that they were pursuing the public assistance process through FEMA, and they were, they were working on all that. That was probably early last week that I spoke with her. Happy to follow up and try and get some more timeline type of information, but they were in contact with their CDVG and HUD folks, working on how they were going to fund those repairs.
Because I know they have received letters, the tenants have received letters that they would be suspended their rent, and they're going to prorate it, which was kind of confusing, because a lot of them didn't understand. They thought, maybe, okay, so I'm going to have to pay back rent for time that I was not in there. So if she could do, send another letter out and a little more clarification to the tenants, I think, then that would settle them down some, because it's, you know, where am I going to get, I can't go to work and I don't have a place to live, and you want rent money from them. So I was about to ask if you had any communication. Did you have something to add?
Well, I was just going to say, she did, well, the Housing Authority did have flood insurance on some of those units, the lower ones. So I think those will be probably the first ones that get repaired. There were also some that were getting cleaned out. They were going in, doing the renovations of those, so those will be able to be occupied first. And that was the higher units.
Those ones in Lincoln Circle?
At Lincoln Circle. Just one of the ones in the middle. They were actually down there cleaning them one day when I was down there. But I think Connie does kind of have a plan now, if you want to reach out to her.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll just, we'll just reach out to her and see what she is, and we'll let the council know.
Okay, thank you for the questions.
These are moving along. Thank you, and to all the staff for everything that's, that they've been doing.
I would say they've been a credit to be where we are today and to.
Yes.
We're blessed.
We are so far ahead.
See what was happening.
Most, most true. John and I had a meeting with some folks today, and they commented that they're doing so much better than, than most of the smaller units of government here.
May I add a comment?
Yeah.
I don't get a public platform a lot to say things, but I had a patient the other day who was medevaced out of their neighborhood in Bat Cave, and they totally were fine with me talking about this, but they had to leave their home and were able to go. So one of the things that they were concerned about, so their actual home was fine, it was just mudslides around it, and they couldn't get back to it. And they were not young. And so they were very worried about the things in their home, and the food, and the mess, and that kind of stuff. And so they had expressed that to the Bat Cave Fire Department. And they were able to go down to their house Monday, no, Friday, and they were allowed to visit their house for like thirty minutes and get belongings and that kind of stuff out. And they said, and they were very sweet, but they said when they got there, their entire refrigerators had been cleaned out, all of the drawers and cabinets of the refrigerator had been washed and were drying on their deck. All the trash had been removed from their home, so these firefighters went in and did that on their own, which I know makes me cry, but it's just, we have really amazing people in this community that take care of each other, and I just, you know, wanted to make sure that people heard that, because I hear stories like that every day, and I'm sure everybody here does, but, you know, that stuff means a lot, and so thank you to them.
Thank you. We do have a closed session that we need to go into for, to establish or instruct public body staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating, one, the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase option, exchange, or lease. I guess that's an I instead of a one. I want to.
Madam Mayor, I'm of the City Council, entered a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.1185 to establish or to instruct the public body staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price or other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease.
Just in case you didn't hear the first act. Any discussion? Not those in favor of entering closed session for reason listed, say aye.